Good evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Audit and Governance Committee. I'm councillor Barry Pierpoint, I'm the chairman of this committee. And my vice-chairman, to my right, is councillor Anton Danni. We'll move to part one of the agenda, the preliminaries. Are there any apologies?
There are apologies this evening from councillors Ari Ambath, Paul Gleeson, David Scoot. Councillor Woodliffe is in attendance this evening, a substitute for councillor Gleeson.
Do any members wish to declare any interest in respect of any items on the agenda? If so, please speak now. No? Okay. Have I got the committee's permission to sign the minutes of the last meeting? Great, thank you very much. There's no public this evening? No? And just before we start the actual meeting, I'd just like to again welcome Jo Brigham again to the meeting. Our independent lay member of the audit and governance committees. It's Jo's first meeting, she's just joined us today. Welcome, Jo, and enjoy the meeting. Thank you, that concludes the preliminaries. We'll now move to part two of the agenda, the agenda items. Item one on the agenda this evening is the quarter two risk management report, which starts on page five of the agenda pack. Councillor Dorian would like you to present this for us, please.
Thank you, Chair. So this report sets out the strategic risks for quarter two as at the end of September 2023. The table 2.2 in the covering report shows the current risk scores. It shows any changes in quarter two and the direction of travel. You'll also notice on page seven, at the end of the strategic risk register, there are eight new risks that have been identified. And another new risk around capacity has been added by SLT following the peer review follow-up. And other new risks have also been identified from reviewing the risk registers right across the partnership. A new register of strategic risks of partnership has also been developed based on the original business case. And you'll find that still on page seven, sorry, under 2.3. And full details of that are then in appendix A. A revised risk management framework has been drafted for the partnership at appendix B. And this gives us a common approach to risk management across the three councils. So just like, Mr Chairman, we've been, where we can, aligning policies and procedures across the three councils, this is in the same vein as that. It's based on good practice and it includes input from our internal auditors. This report is presented to you, Mr Chair, and your committee, prior to going to Cabinet and then full council for approval. And as ever, Suzanne's with me here tonight to answer any technical questions that I might not be able to help you with. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Dorian. Could I have any questions? Are there any questions?
Oh, sorry, councillor Gilbert. He's been missed. Couple of things, really. One of my neighbours, who comes from, I think Romania, was commenting the other day that it's impossible to get a GP in Boston. And I just wonder whether under BBC O2 health, there's a need to perhaps focus on GP waiting lists or the numbers of people who may be on waiting lists or how easy it is for newly arrived communities to access GP services. Because he was saying that with his particular issues, he was having to go back home to get medical care from abroad, which does strike me as being somewhat expensive and maybe slightly unnecessary. That's point number one. My second point is it relates to BBC O3. I have read the whole document, I'm just not picking on the first two. But I just wonder whether in terms of local economy, the market could feature in there somewhere? In terms of either occupancy rates or how much money we're actually raising from the market? Because in terms of businesses and the local economy, I think the market is quite significant. It used to be a very significant lure for people to come from the Midlands to Boston. And I just wonder whether or not that could be included there as well, unless it's included somewhere else and I haven't found it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to that councillor Dorian?
Thank you councillor Gilbert for those comments. Under BBC O2, the points you raised about health, we do have a healthy living board and I think there is a very good two-way dialogue between this council and our health partners. In terms of delivery around GP services, I'd be happy to write to the local commissioning board if you felt that that was appropriate. I'm sorry, your neighbour is struggling to find a GP. And you too, as the ward councillor, or perhaps councillor Savicki Enya as the ward councillor, would also be empowered to write to the health commissioning board. Around the local economy, with particular regard to the market, that's something that councillor Broughton is very cognizant of. He has already come up with some good ideas. I'm sure you'll agree with the teenage market, the farmers' market. He's looking to deliver a craft market. All these issues take time to develop and build confidence with people. So for instance, this weekend, Mr Chairman, he had six farmer stalls booked on the market, but four cancelled with very short notice sadly, leaving only two stalls. Now, to some local residents, that makes us look as though we're not trying hard enough. In fact, the opposite was true. He's also got a vision for the future of the market and how that will look going forward and be sustainable going forward. And I'm sure, I don't want to steal his thunder by telling you what that is, but that all will be revealed in good time. Thank you, Mr Jim.
Thank you.
So I'm presuming that that will be, that will feature in here at some point, that's sort of the measuring the metrics of all of that? In terms of things like occupancy and the amount of money that we're raising from the market? Maybe for something of that sort of nature?
Well, that's for you, committed to make recommendations, if you wish to. That's your role here tonight. If you wish to see that annotated in the document, you can make that recommendation and I will take that forward to Cabinet.
Very much your answer.
Are there more questions, Jo?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just have a couple of observations and question really. I'm the first, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel here because I know that this one was raised at the last committee meeting. But in terms of economic hardship, I'm quite interested to read that all of your indicators are still that this is a likelihood of three. Given all of the reports that I'm reading, I mean Joseph Roundtree just four days ago issued a report calling this our evolving crisis for the country. I note that the farming charity in Lincolnshire has seen a 90% increase in helpline calls. That food banks here are saying the situation is getting worse and they're quite concerned about coming in towards the winter and Christmas period. Given the latest Bank of England forecasts, are we still clear that this is only a three likelihood of economic hardship for our communities? I think you'll find that some people probably think this risk has crystallised for them already. So that was one question. And then in terms of observations, first of all, you know, risk management, good format, good framework. I do think that some of the actions seem very general and sort of approach-like rather than action-like. And I think there are some where it would help when there's, you know, we're developing an X or a Y. It would be good if we had a date so that we know what target date we're working to. Thank you.
Councillor Dorian?
Yeah, thank you for those observations. I fully take on board what you've said and I'd be happy to revisit this. I agree with you that for a lot of our residents, poverty has crystallised and more so for children really. And it's a sad indictment of our whole society, the number of children who now live in poverty. So in terms of that, I'd be happy to look at that. I'd also be very keen to take advantage of your expertise, Jo. And if you think that there is a better way of delivering these reports, I'd be more than open to doing that. And I think that's partly what this committee is for, Chair, is to guide us as a cabinet, to guide us as a council. And you bring these fresh eyes to the table that helps us deliver in a better way.
Councillor Woodliffe?
Thank you, Chairman. I noticed that in the list here we have for health, a reference to dentistry as requested by ANG. I think it was last time. I think that's a very serious issue. It's been raised numerous times at Health Scrutiny Committee in Lincoln. And I think we need to keep going at it because although there are private dentists in the town, they do charge a fair fee for seeing your teeth. As for NHS, things were most non-existent. I don't know what the situation is for NHS dentists. And I'm particularly concerned about children's teeth. That's an area that I'm particularly concerned about. So in terms of risk, I think probably, is it medium risk? I don't know, I would say it might be higher. If dentistry cannot be improved in this area, then it's a really serious long-term risk to people's health. Rotten teeth leads to, you know, blood poisoning on someone, doesn't it? So I don't know where we're going on that one. It comes back in offence, I think, to Lincolnshire Health Scrutiny Committee and our representative there to really hammer the point home at that committee, that we need to do something about raising the standard for dentist dentistry, particularly children's dentistry in this county.
Okay, noted. I think it might be something that, similar to what councillor Gilbert was saying, where we have to bring it forward and then we'll take it forward from there. Do you want to reply?
Yeah, thank you for that councillor Woodliffe. Following my exchange with the mayor at last full council around dentistry and NHS dentistry, I took the opportunity to do a little bit of research on why we're in this perilous state that we are. And it started sadly under the Blair government with the way that they pay dentists and it carried on through the subsequent governments that have been in power. So the finger of blame can be pointed squarely at all spectrums of the political sphere. But I would be more than happy to take those points. Our feedback, our representative on health scrutiny is councillor Welbury. So I'd be more than happy to speak with her and ask her to fight the good fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm interested in these new risks. Would you be able to clarify these risks that other audit committees have identified in our neighbouring and partnership authorities? Or is this Boston specific that we've managed to identify these risks?
Yeah, they're across the partnership, based on the business case for putting the partnership together. And as a result of our, as you know, the peers visited us a year ago and then revisited a few weeks ago to find out how we were doing. And the peer review was looking at the entire partnership, not just us as a council. For those of you that are interested, we will be having the peers visit us next summer as a council and preparations underway. So yeah, they're across the partnership, James, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Yes, I don't mean.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And the only thing what I want to touch on is two things. The first thing is the reality of Boston. We have a lot of newcomers from the EU on daily basis. And a lot of them, they're coming from deprived areas in their own countries. So basically, they're going to pull us back, whatever we're going to do. However, we have to fight the issues. That's one thing. The second thing, I'm just looking at the high risk where we talk about internal communications. As all we know, if you are in a managerial position or you're leading a group, you will need to have a good group behind you to deliver certain programmes and plans. So I'm just worried, probably 50/50 worried about the situation of our staff. And I would like it to probably to be explored much better. And if we can do anything with our staff, that would be great. And all in all, you know, I think it's them at the end of the day who will deliver for us good results. Thank you.
I was just going to say one more thing, Chair. The draft risk management framework's there. If anybody wants to feed through, and I will make arrangements to meet with Jo, so that Suzanne and I can take advantage of her experience. But if anybody wants to feed through any comments about the draft framework, then please do. So we'll have a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gilbert?
Yeah, that segues quite nicely to my next point really, which is a slightly speculative question about the issues that I've raised previously about the general state of dilapidation around the town centre, much of which is associated with the private sector, the private home-owning or landlord sector. And I just wonder whether or not this framework could extend to include something that's looking at the general state of the town itself? Because most people that I speak to are reasonably content with the state of the marketplace. I mean, there are some issues there, but they're not significant. The significant areas of dilapidation are, as we've discussed previously at full council, the routes leading into the marketplace, the routes leading into the town centre. And in some respects, I think the council's got a responsibility to at least raise the subject of the amenity and the appearance of the town centre as an important part of developing the town's business case, if you like, or trying to develop tourism or a more vibrant internal economic marketplace. So it's just a question whether or not it would be possible for us as a committee to look at maybe setting a few sort of issues around risk related to those areas, general appearance of the town.
Are you asking us or you want us to do it?
It's a general comment really, I guess, to the leader. I mean, would you consider it to be a sensible thing for us to do as a committee or not? I mean, would it be something that would assist the council in setting a few sort of benchmarks against which we could evaluate how much more or less attractive the town is becoming over time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I don't see that it fits into the draft framework, councillor Gilbert. I know that you're incredibly passionate about the town centre and the amenity and the aesthetic of it. I think that we are doing a jolly good job with our town centre strategy and how we've developed that and taken great care of it. And I know you've fed into that. I don't see that it belongs in the draft framework, but I'm not always right. Happy to be wrong. If Suzanne wants to come in here, I can see she's nodding.
Thank you. Just to say actually, once we have this framework agreed and the subregional strategy agreed, the next step will naturally be to review all of the risks. So that might be the opportunity to look at some of the areas that you've raised and feed that in at that point. So it will need to come afterwards. We need this framework in place first to make sure that we've got that across the board. But we'll certainly be looking at reviewing all of the risks.
I think some of the things you were talking about, the town centre, I think we could do that at BTAC meeting actually. We could be a little bit more in-depth in there and as six or seven wards of us can push that forward and go from there. Well, we understand what you're saying. Thank you very much for your question. Anybody else? Do you want to just go? Do you want to go, off you go?
The only to ensure obviously is the operation of that framework, which is critical. So I'm just interested that one of the risks, which is about the depot, which is 14, has just crept on as a new risk, which seems to me quite surprising that something so critical has come in as a new risk. And I just wonder whether there's a little bit of scope to review how we are identifying risks to make sure that we don't suddenly have something creepy? Because it seems to me something we might have known about a little before now.
I agree wholeheartedly with that, Jo, I really do. And believe me, the staff are working on it and we are constantly challenging them on this issue. And I know the portfolio holder with that responsibility is very keen to see a resolution as well. I don't know why it didn't come on sooner, to be honest. Do you want to speak?
Yes, and it was an operational risk originally and it's been escalated to a strategic risk. That's why it's newly on that risk. But we will absolutely be reviewing all of the risks once the framework's in place.
Thank you. Can I just ask a couple of little questions? Going on to the cyber incidents and also the technology infrastructure, is there a backup plan if anything of this fails? Because reading some of the stuff here, it just slightly worried me a little bit as if we're not going to end up with a blackout one day. So can you just give me some reassurance that we've got things in place?
I'll come in first on a little bit of that point and then Suzanne can take over. But on the cyber risk, I think I wrote to you all a few weeks ago to say that the cyber training wasn't mandatory. And that was the advice I was given at the time. Since then, I revisited that with the officers concerned and decided that that's a risk that we can't really afford to carry. So just like the staff were mandated to undergo their training, so do all elected members. And I will be writing to you all in the very near future, certainly within the next week, offering you a new date for the cyber training. Because just like the staff, if you don't complete the cyber training, Mr Chair, you will be locked out of your device. So it's a risk that we can mitigate somewhat more, but that we're going to refuse to carry for elected members. As to the more strategic point you raised, I'll give that to Suzanne.
Yes, there are absolutely backups in place, but still the impact is quite high. Because no matter what we do to reduce the likelihood, if it were to happen, the impact would be very high.
Thank you. The other question I want to talk about is communication, which is one of my subjects that I'm always on about. Because, you know, reading in this reporting on page 14, the communication again seems to be very poor internally and externally. And it does worry me that an organisation like this, now we've been talking about communication for a long time, is there going to be some real training and some real effort to get the communication right internally and externally?
Going that first. So recently, you'll know that I brought the communications policy forward, Mr Chairman, and that was a new piece of work for the partnership. And in that document, there was as much about internal communication as there was external. And so that's in my portfolio and something I'm really, really keen on. I would double the size of the comms team overnight if I was allowed to and we had the budget. And so I agree with you, it's such a crucial piece of what we do. So rest assured, that has been monitored very, very closely by myself. But happy to take what Suzanne wants to say too.
Yes, just to say as well, that's the reason why it's on the risk register, to keep a really close eye on it now the communication strategy is in place and make sure that that's having the impact that we hope.
Okay, and the other question from me is about recruitment. Because all I ever hear is, we can't get staff, we can't do this, we can't do that. Well, there's a way of things you can do and there's a way of things you can't do. So what are we putting in place to A, attract staff and B, to retain them? Because, you know, I like to hear solutions as opposed to the same excuses. And I don't think excuses are good enough, in my view. And, you know, other companies have the same issues that this council has in recruiting and retaining staff. What is your solution here in this organisation to recruit, retain staff?
So HR's also my portfolio. I know, I do know it's more operational, although we do have strategic oversight of it as elected members. The chief executive really was telling me, he was on a course recently, learning how other local authorities recruit. Apparently, the done thing now is to walk up to someone in the street you've never met and say, would you like a job? Interesting. So that's really an operational matter that the chief exec will feed through to me with HR. I don't know of any other novel ideas that we've got in train at the moment, sadly, Mr Chair. I know when I became leader, I thought I would get the key to the executive toilet. It's just still not materialised. So I've no idea what else might be going on.
Do you want to come in there?
Hi, just to introduce myself as well, I'm Christine Marshall, Deputy Chief Executive, but also Section 151 for the council. And my patch is corporate, which includes HR, staff development, et cetera. So what we're doing across the partnership is we've created a senior sort of development programme. And we also promote staff on things like Springboard, which is a national scheme for some of our high flyers. But what we have found with our senior officer development programme is that has created quite a lot of internal interest, let's say. And we're doing a lot of apprenticeships. We're looking at how we develop career training, very much focused on grow your own. The reason for that is there is not the quantity of staff out there with skill sets that's required. And certainly PSPS have seen this as well. The only route forward really is to be looking from within and recruiting those who wish to progress and get on and look at those apprenticeship, graduate apprenticeships, all the way through, right from grassroots all the way up to the top. So that is alongside everything else we can do to try and recruit. We're really focusing on growing from within where we possibly can and recruiting in the highest possible calibre that we can.
Well, that's very encouraging to hear because I'm keen to make sure that there is a career path if anybody comes to the council and wants to work here. What is the career plan? How can they progress? How can we retain them by they can see where they can go from one role to the next role and they can go up the management ladder or the supervision ladder, whatever? So they can actually see some ambition there and some drive. So that's very important, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I think career progression in a company and an organisation is key to retaining people.
If we can also add, Chairman, we've actually seen people jump service as well. So through this development programme, they've started in one service, seen the opportunity through the training, et cetera, that were provided and actually jumped from one service to another. So I think it's a great opportunity. I wish it had been available when I was at training, to be honest.
Any more? Councillor Gilbert, thank you.
Just a quick point arising from this current conversation discussion. I mean, I wonder who do we partner with in relation to the apprenticeships? Is it Boston College or is it an establishment further afield? And there used to be at Boston College, a public service course for people, young people who wanted to go into public services. I wonder whether we could make some links with them, if it still exists as a course, that is.
Interesting.
If I can assist, we do partner with Boston College, but we also partner with local unions. So we've worked with University of Lincoln as well with regards to graduate placements, which I have to say are very challenging to try and get into fruition. But I think, again, that's what we need to be doing. We need to be looking all the way through the structure of what those opportunities are.
Thank you councillor Gilbert. I think the course you're thinking of is UPS Uniform Public Service. That's the course which is, it feeds into people that want to become a paramedic or a police officer or join the military. I don't believe there's ever been one for local government per se. So I think you're maybe thinking of that one.
Last question from me. All these high-risk things that we keep seeing, is there a target date? And I think something similar to what Jo was saying earlier. Is there a target date where we're going to see some of these high-risk things change or become medium risk or low risk or they're cleared altogether? Because I think we'd like to follow some progress here on this plan. Because you keep reading high-risk, right, high-risk, high-risk or whatever, means nothing to me. What I like to see is action. I like to see dates that things are going to happen. I like to see when things have been completed or they've gone down the pecking order to something that's so low risk, we're not going to talk about it again. Can you assure me or tell me how are we going to sort that out?
So we have introduced target risks this time. So we'll be able to show those risks that we feel can come down and the impact that the action that's being taken will have on the risk. But some of the risks, the budget risk for example, is high risk and may, as far as I can recall, it's always been high risk because of the impact. We can manage the likelihood, we can make sure it doesn't get even worse, but the impact will always be the same. So there's a mixture. Some of those risks will come down. That's why we've also introduced the heat map so that you can see direction of travel as well. And as we move through each quarter, we'll be able to see more of that detail and exactly what effect it's having.
Thank you. Just so that we can see the progress. I understand about the financial situations. I know that's not going to be easy to change into what we want it to be. But all the other things that are manageable, that can be done, I'd like to see some progress and that, you know, we can come to this committee and think, wow, this has moved from there to there and things have actually happened and this is where I'm coming from. So you agree with me on that? Lovely. One more question, then we're going to, well, two more questions and we're going to move on. Jo?
Just really to add to... Not just focus on high risks. To me, one of the things where organisations quite often fail is to focus only on high risks.
Yes.
And without having good targets around the ambulances, you're suddenly finding, you know, high risks. So I think it is not, you know, let's not just focus on high risks. We need high risk. And in terms of the prudent retention issue, that links back to your other point. And in terms of the prudent retention issue, that links back to your other points.
And get the high risk sorted out first. I'm happy to go on with the rest of you. I agree with you that they're more important and I agree what you're saying. Councillor Woodley, last question.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Just, I want to talk about flood risk, of course, that's the key thing in this area, isn't it? Flood risk? Thank you. It's a BC06, I think it's on the left hand side, that's reference number. That number appears a few times, isn't it? What I know is that the current risk of likelihood of it is two and the impact, the risk is four. I just think that's a bit generous really, because I would have thought it would be more likely, the current risk is quite significant. I mean, some parts of this county have been heavily inundated with water, Bourne Castle or Wayne Fleet or wherever these areas, they've been clobbered. So, I mean, we were lucky in 2013 because the water went the other way really, didn't it? This way, if we come this way, we'd have been, you know, really in big trouble. I know we had some water, did flush parts of the building. But if, you know, if the water level then had been about a foot higher, we would have been out of business. So, I mean, it's a very, very serious matter for this area. I don't think that the likelihood, the risk of, current risk of likelihood being two is rather hopeful.
And where would you like to see it?
Three at least, I would say, actually. But that's my opinion, yeah.
Can anybody respond to that? Somebody wants to hit the three rather than the two?
Yeah, I'll refer that to the lead officer and put your comments forward as well so that they can review that risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman. Now if we come back, thank you.
Thank you. And then one more last question from me and then we're going to move on. Are all the staff signed up to the risk, all the risks involved in their departments and their areas and everybody been trained into risk management or risk training? So everybody's fully aware of what's going off in this building and the organisation?
Yes, we have training in place, but that's the next step after the framework. So when we've got the framework agreed across the three councils, then the next step is training for this committee and for councillors in general and for staff, just as a reminder, and to pick up any changes since the last review. But yes, training is very important.
Thank you. Right, so we'll go on to our part two now of the agenda, sorry, part, item two, sorry, of the agenda. This is the Regulation of Investigatory Powers Act, RIPA 2000, on page 47. Councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Christian Allen's here as well, who's the Assistant Director. So as you can see, the purpose of this report is just to report back to committee any activities that we've undertaken in respect of the Regulation of Investigatory Powers Act. You can see that the council was last audited in 2021 by IPCO. And since then, we haven't actually used any, any kind of surveillance or anything like that at all, Mr. Chairman, but we have to report and once a year to this committee and show that we are complying with the act. So there's, it's there for you all to read. I'm sure you all have. And myself and Christian will answer any questions that you have on it.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Any questions?
Just for noting really, Chair.
Yes, we're noting. Any just questions? A quick question.
Just a quick one, yeah, I know, just for noting, but I, reading the report, I got the impression that the reason that we hadn't actually undertaken any RIPA-related activity, which is a, which is of concern to the community, of course, because we continually have people referring to the fact that fly tipping takes place in the town and there's no surveillance going on and other counties are much better at sort of monitoring those things than we appear to be. But I'm heartened to see that we've, because we're partnering now with East Lindsay, it looks like some expertise is coming into the team and that we might see an increase in the amount of surveillance that's being undertaken in relation particularly to fly tipping. I just wonder whether that's the case or not.
Do we need a reply or are we just noting your, your observation, councillor Gilbert? A councillor, I could reply, so.
Thank you, councillor Gilbert. I mean, as you know, we're only sort of six and a half months in since the election and taking control of the administration. It's something that we, we intend to look at very seriously, the use of covert and overt surveillance around the issue of fly tipping. We've had a lot of ducks to get in a row and we're not there yet, councillor Gilbert, but I can promise you that when we are ready, you will know about it and we will bring that. That would be such a major policy change that we would automatically bring that before a scrutiny committee for your comments and for your guidance. So it's something that we, we long to do, but we're just not there yet. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I just have a reassurance from the committee members on page 48, that the third paragraph says, members of the Audit and Governance Committee are asked to note that the report and the preparation underway, et cetera, et cetera. Are you all familiar, read and happy? That's very reassuring. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item three. Next item on the next agenda is the Internal Audit Progress Report, which is on page 55 of the audit pack or the agenda pack. And I'd like Matthew to present it to us. Thank you very much. Let the people go first and you can start. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chair. Evening, everybody. So I think page 57 just sets out, it's always useful, I think, just sets out again the role of internal audit and the purpose of this report. This is a new format for us, so I think this is the first time the committee has seen our new format for progress reporting. And page 58 then talks about the purpose of the report and that we've reset our assurance opinions that we give. So to bring us more closely in line with sort of professional opinions, we've reset those and you can see on page 58, we've got substantial, adequate, limited and no, and the description against those to tell you why we, you know, so it's not a one word assurance opinion, there's a definition against all of those as well. Page 59 just gives you an update on performance, which I'm really pleased about, actually. It's, we are at the whim sometimes of managers in how quickly we can get audit done. Sometimes audit is a reason for delay because of a resource or a certain reason. Sometimes it's just getting that engagement and getting answers from people. We work really closely with senior management on that. We put a lot of effort into our communication on that. Senior management are good as well at getting back to us on that. So I am really pleased where we are. We've got the rest of the plan scheduled out. We may need to look at postponing one more audit off the plan, just because we've had a few slight delays lately, but that won't have any effect on my ability to give an annual opinion at the end of the year. So we have a range of items that we do in our annual plan. That's always subject to a bit of change potentially. If a new risk comes up or if we just can't quite manage to get all of that, because it's a plan, so sometimes things slightly get in the way. But we're not anywhere near it affecting my ability to give an opinion. And then I think page 60 and page 61 just gives you an update on what we've been doing. So it's been maybe about six months since we did a progress report, Chair, but actually we've been able to do an awful lot of work between that time and now. So I think there's 14 audits included in the progress report. And the analysis of that, the sort of the high level view is page 61 and page 62. And I'm hoping that for the committee members, that gives a really good, clear, robust picture of all the areas that we've been looking at and the assurance that we've been given. I think it's not often we report this many areas in a progress report, but I think actually I quite like it. I know you need to like it, but I think it gives you a good overview of what we've been prodding and testing, which is our role around Boston's control environment. I think then the report just goes into the summaries of all the work we've done. If we ever do a no assurance or a limited assurance, we then attach the full report for the committee to see that. And you can see those are attached in the pack after the progress report. So again, it gives you that oversight of the actual report we did, the responses we get from management. And I think finally, Chair, if I can, just the appendix one and, one and two, which starts on, because there's quite a lot of summary work. Starting on page 80, that, so this is where we list any actions that have passed their due date. So what we try and do is we get a response from officers. So it's, we're quite, you know, we go out to all the officers and say, this is coming up for this date. Can you give us a response to if you've completed this action? If you haven't completed this action, can you give us an update and a new date? And that's all we're looking for really. I think in terms of the two high ones, they're in there, you've got a detailed response against each of those. I think the good thing about it is the dates have only just passed. We're not looking at something that is six months, 12 months, 18 months past and nobody's paying any attention to it. We have got a response and the dates are quite current. When you then move on to page 82 and the medium and low actions, you've got four seen altogether, outstanding, which is a little bit higher, that's building a little bit. And on page 84, you've got a section where we didn't get a response to those overdue medium actions. I think that's all I'd like to say and then I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you very much, Matthew. I'll start with councillor Gilbert first then.
Thank you very much. I've got two, two questions to ask really. The first one is on page 63 and it relates to the issues which seem to be quite, seem to be, sorry. Oh, sorry, 63, 63. And it relates to the somewhat critical situation within what appears to be the housing benefit department. And I just wonder a couple of things. Firstly, do those issues which relate to sort of incomplete documentation and the due diligence required before making a payment of housing benefit, do they, do they relate to the people who are presenting themselves at the counter, so to speak? Or do they relate to the absence of fully qualified personnel to deal with those questions when they arise? My second point relates to page 75, which is, do we conduct exit interviews with people who are leaving our organisation? Because there's a lot of references in there to retaining and, and recruiting, but I didn't notice very much about people who've actually left and why they may have left.
Thank you. Matthew?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, that's two great questions. I think on, on the housing benefit one, that's about when we've looked at records to substantiate claims, that hasn't always been there. So it's about the record keeping in the team. We are just about to start a follow-up because that's limited, we're about to start a follow-up audit of that. So again, in a, in a few committees' time, we'll be able to bring that report back to the committee and you'll be able to see that picture of hopefully, excuse me, that improvement in that service. And if it hasn't, again, you'll still get to see that and ask questions about that at the committee. And in terms of exit interviews, I think when we did the audit, we found that there was quite a low take-up of exit interviews. And, and it's about whether there's ways we can improve that take-up or make it more part of the process. Because I think the more information you can glean from exit interviews, the better then that informs any policy around recruitment and retention.
Joe?
Thank you. And first of all, thank you for what I thought was quite a clear and concise report. I'm a great lover of internal audit. I think it's incredibly important because it focuses on some of the fundamental processes of our business and how well they're, they're performing. I think I was quite surprised to see how many overdue actions there were. And the high ones, yes, while there is quite a long narrative, again, same as with the risk, I would prefer to see dates by which things will be delivered. So things are in consideration, we'll come up with a plan. Well, yes, when will we have a plan for a plan? I think I would personally like to see. And then the number of overdue actions which weren't high, again, that seems quite a lot to me. And I just wonder, are we setting realistic time scales for delivery or are we not delivering against realistic time scales? And those are, that's quite a fundamental question. And I suppose as a follow-on to that, for me, anything with limited assurance is an extremely high priority and needs the focus of the senior leadership team. Do we really have a very clear focus on addressing our limited assurance actions?
I'd like to reply, Mark.
I think perhaps I'll take half of that and Christine can take the other half. In terms of time scales, we, we try to be very clear when we have the closure meeting with services about making sure they set a realistic time scale. I think perhaps sometimes they're slightly over ambitious in that, but, but that is a conversation that we have as part of the closure meeting. And I think again, in terms of, even if they've set that time scale and missed it, if they can provide an update as part of this process or to us outside of this that says, we haven't done it, but here's a date that we'll do it by, and that is what we request. I think that that helps. And again, that would come to committee. So you can see that perhaps we haven't done it in the original date, but here's what we're going to do and by when. And as you rightly point out, we don't always quite get that clarity in the response that we get sometimes. But we, that's, that's another communications message that we're always pushing as well and having that conversation with senior leadership team.
Thank you. Councillor Mountain. Oh, sorry. Wouldn't you like to come in, Christine?
Yes, please. Thank you, Chairman. So there's two aspects I'll respond to. One is sort of tacking on the end of the point that's already made. So in terms of that follow-up, I think there is a, there's an issue in terms of setting audit deadlines, that we also don't set them too long. It's about setting a reasonable target to hit. What I would say for some of the ones that have been missed around the mediums, that particular service has seen a high level of churn in terms of staffing and that's an outsourced service within PSPS. So I'm expecting those to be addressed and caught up shortly as that, that staff cohort is now moving towards being full establishment. So if you like, there's a particular timing issue associated with, with those particular areas. In terms of the focus on the limiters, I can absolutely assure you, this focus on the limiters, the limiters all go to SLT. I take a very clear interest in those limiters, in making sure that they are addressed. For example, the cyber one, I know has been fully addressed because people who had not addressed it were cut off recently to make sure such training was actually addressed and that cyber training was brought up to speed. So if you like, we are putting, we're following through with making sure there are robust processes in place to make sure key targets are hit. So it's, it's a journey for these audits, but obviously the high ones we focus on and we are there to ultimately try and ensure a high standard of compliance.
Thanks and noted. Okay with that? Thank you. Councillor Mountain.
Thank you very much, Chair. Page 84, I'm just, I've flicked through the floor and I've read all the way through. I sort of echo what Joe was saying about weak signals and it's something that always does bang in the back of my head about weak signals. In reference to the complaints section, as you read through all of sort of the agreed actions, out of all of them, as it reads, these are the most coldest as it comes through as it's going to be as a part of a policy refresh. I guess my question over is what policy refresh are we having around this? And bear in mind, this is complaints, I'd expect, you know, a certainly more detailed response than a cold policy on it.
If you ask my opinion, it's quite appalling, to be honest, the, the response on here on that subject. So can we have a response?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Chair. I'm the Monitoring Officer for the Authority, so nice to meet you. In terms of the complaints policy, that is going to be reviewed across the partnership. So these are, these go back quite some time to an audit undertaken in 2019, 20. That is part of the policy review that's going on at the moment across the council. The one slight delay in bringing that forward is that the local government and social care ombudsman is currently consulting on a new code of, code for complaints across the sector. So what we don't wish to do is bring something forward at this point, which may well be mandated on us in the future around these elements. So we'll, I can bring you a further update back to the next committee of timeframes around that, but the LGSCO is currently consulting on that and I think they're looking for their new code to come in from the first of April next year and then give authorities a 12-month window then to implement that.
Do you want to come back?
Can I just come back on that? Thank you, Chair. When were we made aware that obviously the ombudsman would be coming involved with this? Because obviously the, the due date was in 20. Obviously we've delayed that till 2022. We're now over a year on from that. It's a case of this is meant to be one of the front forward facing things and certainly within the industry that I work in, our complaint shutdowns within one day, two days max. If not, obviously off gem get involved very quickly with us. What, you know, I'm trying to gauge the timeline of, are we just sitting on the fence waiting for a policy to come in to make sure our policy meets?
And I don't have the precise time for when, for when, for when that started, but it will not cover the whole of this period. I think the, some of the delays have been around the original joining of two councils, which was then going to be reviewing this policy and then the development of three councils coming forward. So there's been a prioritisation in terms of which policies do we need to align first? These were always going to be considerations within any revised policy. There weren't recommendations to make changes. So just to give you some assurance, stage one complaints are logged in the authority. It's not that we're not doing that. There are investigation documents. There are investigation documents that are provided and the review was questioning whether they should be part of the policy document or not for when it was refreshed, but they weren't necessarily saying these things must change was my understanding. So there's been a, a number of things that have brought that forward, but it is certainly in the programme for us to look at this. And I think it would have come forward earlier this year, had it not then been for this national review. And, and so we've just moved that timescale to align with that national review and brought other work, such as the, the risk framework and the F O I policy that you might have seen come through and various committees. We've brought that forward in the programme and this will come forward later.
Anything further? No? Okay, we'll move on. Christine.
So just wanted to add that we'll ask for the none received to reflect that commentary that's just been made.
Matthew.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just, I just wanted to come back to the comments about limited assurance. I think what's really useful for the committee, I think, is where the relevant manager comes to the committee where you've got a limited report. So you've got two on this agenda, but I don't think you've got the relevant managers here that the committee might want to ask questions about that service. But whether in future you want to consider that and make sure those people are invited whenever there's a low or a limited assurance point.
I actually think that's a very good suggestion. I think we ought to look at that very carefully because I think people are accountable. And I'd like people to be in this room to be accountable because that's what we're here for. Is that a possibility? We can have the people here?
Absolutely, Chairman.
Well, we'll do that in the future going forward. Then we'll have people here who are responsible for some of these actions or lack of them at this meeting to give us their, their views on why it is. Okay? Rather than just taking assumptions and perhaps being wrong. Let's move on. Councillor Woodley.
Thanks, Chairman. I was looking at page sixty four and that's key controlling testing, count, control, account reconciliation. Well, that's really an accounting thing. There are six items there on page sixty four and sixty five. I think the most significant one, and that is the last one, which talks about the P S P S finance officer responsible for carryout reconciliations on maternity leave until August twenty two has now left the employ, responsibility for payroll reconciliations in future has yet to be assigned. That's a staffing issue, isn't it really? So if we want people to come here, we've got to have the people on staff to come. You know, there's no staff, then we, we can't really drag anybody in. Because there's, there are six items here, aren't there, which are of concern, page sixty one. I think also that picked up on page one hundred and six, I think. If I'm correct on that, about the various actions that are planned.
Councillor Woodley, the, the payroll one is, is a massive problem. If you look at all the pages, it's, it's like, it's like a store on its own. And I think somebody needs to give us some background to that because I, I've a lot of questions marks against all that payroll. So you're asking the question, I was going to ask the question, I think we're all going to ask the question. So can somebody give us an insight? Because I find that unacceptable because some manager somewhere has not done their job. Some person in responsible for that operation hasn't done their job. And here we are talking about something that really should never have happened.
Yes.
We'll arrange a separate briefing for that service to, I mean, on the two that are audits, we, we can arrange a separate briefing for you to go through them in more detail.
Okay, right. A question from James Cantwell, Councillor Cantwell.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo the comments yourself and councillor Woodley have made and that what I was going to bring up as well, actually, on page sixty four. All those items are worry to me. And particularly the, the item about the senior management not being informed or formally advised. So I would like further clarification of what formally advised means because that infers there was, they were informally advised at least and the escalation process. And but moving away from that, onto page sixty two and sixty three, on the comments on the overdue medium and low priority actions. If you drop daters on what the new due dates for these are, because a lot of these have now passed and I'll just be interested to know, have we got any new dates for these?
Thank you. Any, any responses?
I'll, I'll take the dates one. I mean, we haven't got a new date for those. I think those comments came through that they're both just about finalized. It's how I read that, but we can follow that up and just confirm that. But that's the response we've received for this meeting. But I can pick that up for you.
I think Christine wants to reply as well.
Cyber risk is complete.
Okay, thank you. And we go on to councillor Middleton.
Yeah, that last five minutes has been very refreshing for me. I've been sat here for half an hour listening about, we've got to review it, we've got to audit it. We've got people starting to pick at individual little things on this risk. We're not here to do that. We're here to make sure that we operate properly as a council and people are doing the work and the jobs. And until the chairman started to touch on that, we ignore that. We're just here with hot air talking about reviewing, doing this, doing that. What we need to be doing is making sure that the jobs are being carried out and people are accountable and bringing managers here to answer would be a good move forward because I've come from the private enterprise. They don't dwell too much on this, that and the other. But for instance, cyber training, if somebody hadn't done it three days before, they'd have got a phone call and said, you get it done. And there wouldn't be any discussion about it. It would be done. And we wouldn't then have a high risk of people not having done it. I'll rest my case.
Thank you, councillor Middleton. Very well noted. Joe.
Just a quick one, Mr. Chairman. I fully support the idea of having anyone who's got a limited assurance coming to present personally at the meeting and to answer questions. That is, I think, best practice. But I would also suggest that you consider inviting anyone who's got limited assurance, even if they haven't got overdue. Because our, our committee can help to keep them on track and ensure that those ones don't get overdue. I think we should focus on limited assurance.
Thank you noted. Any more questions from anybody? Yes, can I sit down?
Thank you very much. I, I, I think I echo what councillor Middleton has said. I think I come from private sector. You know, you work, you have to do the job, you have to deliver. You don't deliver, you get out of the door. And that's, that was my life, believe you and me. I worked with my bosses straightforward and I was next men to them. You don't deliver, and I'm sorry to say that, you, you get the sack or whatever, something is going to happen. But I mean, you look at it and say so many oranges, which is high risk, high risk, high risk, you know, communications, high risk, this is high risk. Now, and as Joe said, you know, you need a date, you need that. I think we need, as our leadership and the new leadership has always, I think, praised for having accountability and traceability. We should be traceable, we should be accountable to what's happening. And I think as councillors, and I will agree with the chairman, we need to know the payroll, what's, what's going on with payroll, how, how we can do that. You know, we have problems with hiring members, we have problem with hiring staff, we have problem, you know, in many ways, but there is no, nothing coming in green and saying, yes, we did that and we did that, we did that. We're just, you know, looking at that. And as I say, from private sector, when you need something to be done, it's done. And I think if you don't do it, then you're not complying. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, councillor Woodley.
Thank you. Councillor Woodley, we'll check one more question from you, then we'll move on.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I want to come back to what I was saying earlier, to that sixth line on page sixty five, actually. And it says, responsibility for payroll reconciliations, sorry, in future has yet to be assigned. So clearly we don't have an officer there, I presume. The post hasn't been filled, we haven't got anybody to pull in, have we?
I'll let Matthew come back on that one.
I think at, at the time we did the audit, that, that's what we found. So, so although a bit of time has passed, we always like to report to you what we've done. Otherwise you'll lose that initial message. I believe they did assign it to somebody else who is currently on maternity leave.
Who is currently on maternity leave?
Yes.
So who's filling in?
So, so I think it's probably now gone to somebody else. What we're about to do is a follow up audit of that. So that's one of the things that we'll look and we'll follow up on, and that will be reported back to this committee.
Because it undermines, undermines a problem with, with our, with the system. If somebody goes on maternity leave or has a serious illness, who fills the spot? These are key positions, aren't they?
I think we made that point clear.
Thank you.
Councillor Woodley, we made that point clear. I think the officers have got what we're saying. They surely have because we've had a good talk about it and everybody seems to understand where we're coming from. So, you know, some of these things may have moved on when this, this report was done. I don't know how long ago was this report done, Matthew? When did it, when you complete it? When was the completion date?
August, these were finalized.
We're talking about three or four months down the line. Hopefully somebody picked some of these up and has started to action them and get them moving, hopefully. I have to say, and I want to, we'll, we'll move on after this. I actually find this quite poor for the auditors to come through all this law. And after, after stuff in here, to me, doesn't look informative, presented very well from the point of view, it's not getting these, it's not getting the cooperation. The, the limited information is getting. How can you do your job as an auditor when people aren't actually working with you, can't give you answers? It's just not good enough. And I think the two officers sitting in this room tonight ought to take all this away with them, make sure that all their managers are clear that this committee is not happy reading things like this in an auditor's report. It just does not bode well for me as a chairman to see all this. And I can't say I'm very pleased with what I've read. I think that's enough said. We will move on. I thank you all for that. We'll note all the comments and that will move on. Thank you. Right, the next item on the agenda is the premature repayment of the P W L B borrowing, item four on page one, three, one. And you're going to ask, is that you, Christine, to present? Shaun, so beg your pardon, Shaun. Apologies. I can't see you. Oh, it's here, Shaun, beg your pardon.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the report before you today, the purpose of the report is to inform Audit and Governance Committee of a delegated decision on the fifth of October, two thousand and twenty three by the Deputy Chief Executive and Section one five one officer in consultation with the portfolio holder for finance to prematurely repay all the public works loan board borrowing. If we go to paragraph one, by way of background, the council borrowed fifteen point four four nine million pounds from the P W L B to effectively support its unfinanced capital expenditure incurred in that year. The decision at that time was taken to externally borrow rather than use internal cash balances based on the interest rates that were available in the market at that time. And the council's annual budget for external interest payments during the year is three hundred and eighty two thousand, three hundred and eighty eight pounds on that borrowing. U K interest rates have risen sharply from naught point one percent in November two thousand and twenty to present levels of five point two five percent. And this has resulted in borrowing rates also increasing. By way of principle, the council can repay public works loan board borrowing at any time. And the general principle is that if the redemption percentage rate is below the existing loan rate, then a premium would have to be paid. However, where the redemption percentage rate is above the existing loan rate, a discount would be received on the loan amount. On the fourth of October, I highlighted the market circumstances to the section one five one because the P W L B redemption rates rose sharply following a rise in yields on US treasuries, which had also had a knock on effect on the UK rates. These rates had fallen back over the following day slightly, but only slightly. So on the fifth of October, two thousand and twenty three, the redemption rate for these, for this borrowing was four point seven percent. And if the full amount was repaid, there would be a discount of six point four one seven million pounds on that day, meaning we would only have to repay nine point zero three two, three, two billion pounds to clear the borrowing from the public works loan board. Under accounting regulations, that discount received would have to be allocated to revenue over a ten year period. Net general fund impact, based on the, the financial analysis of that decision was that there would be, over the first ten years, there would be a revenue gain of five hundred and sixty nine thousand to seven hundred and seventeen thousand pounds. So a significant saving to the council. We then looked at the council's current investments, sorry, minimum, we, we was looking at the property fund investments. We are awaiting government changes to minimum revenue provision, which is how we have to pay for unfinanced capital expenditure that has been previously incurred. And at the moment, we are still awaiting that information from government, albeit we have been told that the likely impact, the implementation date is going to be first of April next year. So not an awful lot of time left for the council to plan based on the late decision of government. But if the decision, what we are planning on doing at that time is reviewing the council's investments in property funds to make sure that they are still financially viable, viable based on those accounting regulation changes. But if the decision was made that they aren't viable, then the council would be, would be in a position where it would be required to redeem its borrowing, prematurely repay the borrowing because auditors would class that as being over, overborrowed. Because effectively, if we redeem the investments, we've no longer got the unfinanced capital expenditure. On the thirtieth of September, the council had investments of fifty seven point eight million pounds, ranging from instant access funds, time deposits, property fund investments. Take paragraph two point five shows what the council's capital program and financing approved as part of the budget report, just to set the overall treasury scene. And you'll see there that in that table, you've got capital expenditure in current year of thirty three point three three million pounds. And then seven point eight million and so on. And the paragraph two point six shows how that is being financed and the expected investment balances. As is always the case on capital programs, there tends to be slippage. So those investment balances at the end of those, each of those financial years is likely to be higher as a result of slippage. So by way of conclusion, the overall position was that if we looked at the reasons for the recommendation, the council could be required to repay its external borrowing if the decision is made to redeem its property fund investments because of changes in accounting regulations. The council is in a position where it can afford to repay the borrowing, taking account its capital program and its, in the medium term financial strategy. Sudden rise in redemption rates provided an ideal opportunity to redeem the fifteen point four four nine million pounds with borrowing with a reduced payment of nine point zero three two percent. Those rates are set twice daily and therefore those discounts vary twice daily. Just by way of scene setting, since this decision was taken, looking at today's rates, the redemption rate was previously four point seven. That rate, that rate is now four point two three percent, which would mean that that discount, if we'd made that decision today, would be around eight hundred and eighty thousand pounds lower than it was that when, when the decision was made. So in accordance with delegations contained in the council's constitution and the treasury management strategy, the section one five one officer has delegated authority to make a decision to pay back existing borrowing, providing all due diligence and other S I P for financial procedure rules have been complied with. The decision taken should be taken in consultation with the portfolio holder for finance and reported to the next Audit and Governance Committee meeting, which is the purpose of this report. And it's also going to the next quarterly meeting of the cabinet as part of the quarter two monitoring report. That concludes the report and the recommendation is that the committee members, Audit and Governance Committee, note the decision to prematurely repay. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. Before we do the, the voting, let's just have any question, anybody? Have you like to ask any questions? Councillor Woodley.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I've said I'm not a, I'm not an accountant or finance officer or whatever. Just seems to me that there's quite a long delay, isn't there, between making a decision and the actual impact of it? So, you know, we can make a decision, perhaps we, council can make a decision this month and then, but the, the, the actual, the actual money, amount of money we pay has, would have varied because the interest rate would have gone up or down or up or down. You know, and we, in a sense, we're in a situation, we can make a decision about, it's, it's a good idea to do this because the redemption rate is, the discount is, say, you know, seven million or eight million, whatever. And then when we do it, it's only three million. So I mean, it's, it seems to be a, a problem. I'm not a finance person. So I mean, you're more in that.
Well, let our financial wizard give us the answer. Well, let our financial wizard give us the answer.
I'm not a financial anything.
No, not you. Christine.
Thank you, Chairman. So just to give some reassurance, the reason it's delegated is so we can move at speed. The, the markets are highly volatile and you need to, you know, we had four hour windows within which to see what the rates were and make a decision. So literally the circumstances were that we had been watching it for a few months. The American market suddenly shifted the week before it threw the rates up substantially. And we had a window probably of two or three days in which to crystallize that redemption. And that's effectively what happened. So it all happened within a forty eight window, fairly busy forty eight window, forty eight hour window, I think is fair to say. But the, the matter was concluded and that is why it's a delegated decision. It's like taking borrowing out or loans out. We have to make them, sometimes loans where we're lending to the market are within a fifteen minute window. So you have to be making them quite quickly.
No, they're not months at all, councillor Woodley. It's, it's minutes or hours. I have to say, to be, to be fair, I have to say I have to say, to be, to be fair, I have to say Christine did ring me one evening time to advise me as the chairman of the ANG what she was doing. I think she's obviously spoke to the portfolio holder and also to the leader. So we were aware of what was happening in all that, in a very short space of time.
I didn't really understand how it was operating, that's the thing. So there was understanding, and now I understand it.
Now you understand. Right, move on, Joe.
Yeah, I think we've so far today been reasonably critical in some areas of the offices here. I would just like to say that I think this is an excellent agile move. Certainly financially, it looks, it looks good, but not only that, it is also mitigating a risk which may crystallize when the new policy comes from government. So I'd just like to say that we're here to support as well as to to challenge. And I think that was an excellent and agile move.
Thank you very much. I entirely agree, I'm sure all the committee does. Council Middleton.
Yeah, I'd like to say what a fantastic job you've done there. I'm not quite sure how this money, it seems a bit magic money to me in that we've shortened the term of our borrowing and therefore we don't have to pay interest. Not quite sure how it shows in our accounts that we've saved millions of pounds. Is it because we've already committed that money into the future that we will be paying it and it's at risk? So therefore we can now draw that back out of the risk, at risk money and it becomes spendable money again.
What's effectively happened is you had a loan on your balance sheet for fifteen and a half million and you redeemed it at nine million. So it effectively creates that surplus for you then to put through your accounts over ten years as a discount effectively on that loan redemption, which was due in full at the end of that loan.
It is magic money.
Yeah, it is. It's money we haven't spent, but we have committed to spend and we're going to put it into another column now.
It's slightly more sophisticated than that, Chairman. So it's like you had a mortgage that you're planning to pay back and the bank said, if you repay it now, you'll repay less. So you you're going to have to pay it. Well, we had spent it because we bought the assets at that time. I know. Yeah, so we had assets we purchased, which are property funds, and we had loans. And the two are not connected, they are disconnected. Therefore, you can do different things with them at different times. There was an opportune moment, which was about a week to redeem that debt and we redeemed it.
And that's why I said Christine was a financial wizard. So we'll move on to councillor Woodlift.
I was going to ask a question, it's pretty behind you with that with the State Street loan, isn't it? That is the question really is, I mean, is it because the, that the government, the loan that we took out is from the government and therefore we have the opportunity to repay it at discount? Why can't, why can't we do it with the State Street loan? That's the thing, you know, the one million pounds was taken out eleven and a quarter percent nineteen ninety-two, which hangs around our neck, doesn't it?
Is that relevant for today's meeting then? It was a long time ago.
I just wonder whether it's, you know, how it connects. We, I don't, we still don't understand how it is we pay back nine million when we borrowed fifteen. But then I'm not.
I think what I'd like you to do is have a separate meeting with Christine afterwards. I'd better explain it to you because I think we'll be here all night if we get around this table. I think the nineteen ninety-two thing has gone long on and think we'll move on from there. But I take your point, but I don't think we'll discuss it tonight because it's something you can talk to Christine with later. You don't mind, do you?
No, I'm fine about that.
Thank you very much. Move on, any other questions before we move on? No, right, but go to the vote then first. Can I have a, can I have a, can I have a, oh, we don't want to propose that? Just a note?
Yeah, just a note.
I might read the wrong one. It says here, move to the vote. So we need a, we need a proposal, can I have a proposal please? Councillor Danny and Councillor Gilbert secondly, are we all in favor of the, of the, of the? Yes. Any, anybody against? No, right, so we've all, all in favor, we've moved on. Thank you very much. Right, we go on to the next one again from Shaun. It's a midterm treasury management update. Thank you Shaun, over to you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I proposed, don't propose to go over the overarching report. I start, I tend to go through the appendix, which starts on page one, four, nine. So by way of background, the council receives, has to produce various treasury reports. And the Audit and Governance Committee has been delegated the responsibility for reviewing and scrutinizing all those reports for treasury before any of those reports go to council. The council and Audit and Governance Committee receive a treasury management policy statement, treasury management strategy statement in advance of the financial year. And then they receive also quarterly update reports and midterm reports. And it's the midterm report that you're receiving today. Paragraph three, as usual, is our economic and interest rate commentary from our external treasury advisors link group. I don't propose to go through that because there's quite a lot of information in there, but it sets the scene as to what's been happening in the global economy and why performance to some degree is where we are today. But just a couple of points from there. Inflation, just by way of a change to that inflation, we recently received inflation news that inflation had gone down to four point six percent. And that's mainly due to the massive increase in electricity and gas prices dropping, dropping out of the equation because that happened just over a year ago. So they're no longer part of the calculation. And also the interest rate forecast peaked at five point two five percent. And that's seems to be for the remainder of the year. And so there is some people in the market that think there may be one further increase, but the overall consensus of the opinion is that rates have peaked at five point two five percent. Paragraph four refers to the treasury management strategy and annual investment strategy. And we have to update on treasury prudential indicators. And you'll see there in that table, the authorized limit and operational boundary for borrowing hasn't changed, still remains at twenty-eight and twenty-five million. And you also have to report the capital financing requirement, which based on the original budget was twenty-one point one seven two million. And as the latest approved indicator, that was eighteen point one four one million. And that was due to the changes in MRP that was made at the year end. Paragraph five refers to the council's capital position and the table in paragraph five point one shows the current position. You've got the budget of thirty-three point three three million and the latest approved budget, that was the original budget I referred to before. The latest approved budget is now thirty-five point eight. Actual expenditure to the thirtieth of September was just under one point six million. And the estimated outturn is twelve point two million. And that is mainly due to the slippage in the capital program on those major developments for the new towns, for the towns funding. Paragraph five point two refers to the council's financing of that capital program. And you'll see there how that finance, that capital program is being financed from capital receipts, grants and reserves. And effectively what, after all that financing, what is your borrowing requirement in respect for that capital expenditure? And you'll see that the estimate is that that borrowing requirement for the financial year will be nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So the following table in five point three refers to the overall position on your capital financing requirement. It's currently set at eighteen point one four one. That's how much historic capital expenditure you have that hasn't been paid for. And that actual expenditure is seventeen point two four seven at the end of September and is forecast to be eighteen point one four one million at the end of the financial year. Your limits to borrowing activity, that shows the position there is you're not in, you're not allowed to have external borrowing over and above your capital financing requirement. And you'll see from the table there, the estimated outturn. We've got a capital financing requirement of eighteen point one four million and external borrowing of sixteen point four four nine million. That was obviously at the time this report was written. But since then, your external borrowing now stands at just one million, which is the State Street loan. Paragraph six refers to borrowing, again, a little bit out of date, but it just provided the overall summary of your Public Works Loan Board loans. And as you'll see there, that they were due to mature in two thousand and sixty-eight, two thousand and sixty-nine. But that's no longer the case. The next report, obviously that decision was made after the council made that, did this report. So the report for quarter three that comes to the Audit and Governance Committee will provide tables that shows the benefit of making that decision, revised outturn positions for external borrowing, revised outturn positions for interest received. Because you're obviously going to have less, less money invested, you'll receive less interest. But to counter that as well, it will show you how much of that discount is applicable to the period that's just passed. And the table, the chart there, the graph there shows what the Public Works Loan Board rates have been doing over the past financial, during the current financial year. And you'll, you'll see there that they started to reduce, the red line at the bottom was the fifty year target. But the, all the other dotted lines are where those actual PWLB rates were over those particular periods of time. And they are the one year, five year, ten year, twenty-five year and fifty year loans. Paragraph eight, we have to inform you in relation to how the council is produced by way of compliance to treasury prudential indicators. I can inform you that we've operated within those treasury and prudential indicators and we don't foresee any issues in complying with those indicators for the remainder of the financial year. By way of the annual investment strategy, paragraph nine, the council's priority has always been the security of its capital, its liquidity second and finally yield. That is, that strategy was approved at council on the sixth of March as part of the budget set in report. And by way of performance, you'll see the graph on the bottom of page one, six, one shows how bank rates have been performing. And you'll, as you'll see, at one stage, they did get up to six and a quarter percent in the twelve month period. But that has now dropped down to around five and a half percent. So investment rates, yes, in the market have now started to fall. The table you will see on page one, sixty-two shows the investments that the council held at the thirtieth of September totaling just over forty million pounds. And that gives you a breakdown of the institution's start date, end dates, whether they're fixed or variable and what that rate is. And as you'll see recently, the highest we got up to was a one year loan at six point six nine percent. But as of today in the market, if we were to do one year loans, those rates are now down around five point five percent. One of the benefits of making that decision to prematurely repay the borrowing is you'll have less money to invest in the market, therefore you'll be reducing your counterparty exposure as well. So that's another benefit of that decision. The next table shows you the council's property funded purchases. It's a total of seventeen point seven two four million pounds. That has been adjusted for the M and G fund, which is currently in liquidation and being repaid back. And as you'll see, there is a remainder of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one on that. But yeah, seventeen point seven million pound total cost. And then that's the following landscape table provides you with an up to date position of those property funds as at the thirtieth of September. So you'll see the net asset values was fifteen point eight million pounds, which is an overall loss since purchase of just under one point nine million. It provides you also with the rates of return that you are receiving as by way of revenue distributions. And it also shows you what your capital gain or losses since the asset was purchased and also since the start of the financial year. So during the current financial year, the overall reduction in value is just under three hundred and eighty thousand. And then the next table on page one, six, five shows a overview of the returns that you've received. So prior to the current financial year, you'd receive distributions of net distributions, that is after management fee costs of just over three point three million pounds. We budgeted, the profile budget at period two was for three hundred and twenty-two thousand pounds. And we'd actually received three hundred and forty, just under three hundred and forty-two thousand, giving overall net distributions since purchase of just under three point seven million. And then the other, the next table provides a breakdown of maturity in relation to the overall portfolio, twenty-six percent short term. That was slightly high at that time, based on the fact that we was keeping a close eye on the Public Works Loan Board discounts that were available and reviewing. It was part of the review process, we didn't want to make sure that we've got those locked out long term when we might need those funds short term, but they were still receiving in excess of five percent. And then the table on top of page one, sixty-six, one, sixty-six shows the budget of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand for property fund investments net as at quarter two and the actual of one million and seventy-seven thousand. That's for treasury investments split between treasury investments and property fund investments. So slightly, slightly better than budget on property fund investments and considerably over budget on your treasury time deposit investments. And by way of outturn forecast, at the thirtieth of September, the budget was one point four six two million and the outturn is expected to be two point three three million. Investment returns, we've achieved an average rate of four point nine one percent compared to four point four three at quarter one. And that's compared with the benchmark of five point naught two four, which was previously six, four point six five percent. And property funds have received a rate of three point eight three nine percent compared with just a fraction over quarter, at four percent quarter one. So that gave an overall rate of four point five percent compared with four point two six at quarter one. And those higher level of investment income can be, can be put down to higher levels of interest rates available in the markets in comparison with what the rates were expected to be when the budgets were produced and also higher investment levels due to additional grant funds being received. There's been no change in the council's risk appetite that needs to be reported. And the appendix A one provides a breakdown of that capital program that I referred to earlier. And it shows you the split between all the schemes and the corresponding numbers per scheme. So that provides you with the overall information in relation to that report. The, the recommendation is that council, Audit and Governance Committee, note the report and make any comments that they wish to make to council when they consider the report on the fifteenth of January two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you Shaun. Let me ask you a question. You did that report beautifully and it's very detailed, thank you very much. Are there any areas of concern in that report or anything, you know, that you have, you could share with us?
And there's no areas of concern, obviously, one area for concern is always in an environment where interest rates are starting to fall. Because interest in, when you have rising interest rates and you are performing in excess of your budget, it can be, it can become customary for budget managers to think that there is more money available. But these high rates are temporary and they're not going to last forever. And I know the section one five one officer is well aware of that. And we aren't planning on increasing the base budget for investment income due to a small blip to the benefit of the council, obviously, whereby we've got significantly higher rates of return. But yes, we have to be mindful that it is only temporary. One area, another area of concern is in relation to, it's already been flagged up, is that minimum revenue provision changed to government guidelines of what we have to do to pay for unfinanced capital expenditure. If they change those rules, then we are already on with that. We are going to review that decision as to whether that decision to make the investment in property funds still remains a valid decision based on accounting regulations that have now changed. And one of the benefits, as we stated earlier, we've made that decision in relation to the borrowing. That's locked in that discount. If the decision is made that we can't afford to stay in property funds based on the new accounting regulations and therefore we need to sell those funds, then yes, we may sell them at lower than we paid for them, but it would be managed. But you've also got the benefit of understanding now that we've made a significant benefit for redeeming the loans.
Thank you for that additional information. Thank you very much. Christine, you want to come in, do you?
I really wanted to thank Shaun because it's been a partnership in terms of myself working with Shaun on both the previous report and this report. Huge amount of work and effort, both in terms of managing the property funds, managing the debt and managing your investments during what has been a highly inflationary period. The only thing I'd really add is we've been stepping in what they call stepping your investments. So we're locking them in long, stepping in, and that means you've now got the length of those investments for a year, one at six point six nine percent. The rates have really come down. The rates have really come down a lot now. And that is something again that we'll need to be very mindful of. And the point Sean was making, the risk is what I call, and in is a bit of an investment income underpin that's occurring at the moment. So when we're setting the budget for next year and future years, we need to be really mindful of that. And that's something that will be considered as part of the MTFS, where again, myself and Sean will be working on that and what levels are built in. So, you know, it's really a volatile environment and we continue to manage it. The one final point I'd make is again, to manage our MRP risk, we will be managing, reviewing the MRP strategy document that will go to full council in March, again, to move towards the annuity method for these particular property funds. And then that again, that will manage that risk of MRP should that kick in at some future point, which we are expecting it to come. So again, thanks to Sean.
Thank you, Christine. Any, any questions? Joe?
Well, it looks for a start as if we're managing our financial risk, particularly relating to changes to accounting rules well. So that is very good. I just had a couple of small questions. The first is on capital expenditure, we are heavily underspent to date. The forecast looks relatively ambitious, given where we are. We still need quite a run rate on those projects to achieve what we've currently got as forecast. Are they, in your view, realistic or are we still over optimistic in terms of our forecast about turn there?
Capital expenditures, it always tricky. Also, some of those projects could spend very quickly, very fast, depending on what happens with them. I'd probably say it is optimistic. Project managers are eternally optimistic on capital programs. And the towns fund projects have been particularly difficult to pin down as to exact dates, out the door dates. So I'd say those figures are still optimistic, but we continue to work with those managers. But bearing in mind the end date of towns fund, which is 2025, 2026, that money will be going out the door fairly quickly over the next few months.
You'd come back now?
No, that's fine. I did have one other question, and that was just in terms of your maturity table that you gave on page 165, I think it is, do we have targets for, for maturity timelines? I know quite a number of organizations have that where you have a certain percentage that you would ideally keep in each of the timeframes between a year and a week.
So that's the stepping I was referring to. So what they advise is when you're on a, an environment where it's going up, you'd step with it and lock long, which is what we've done. We're limited to a year. So now we need to be looking at, do we think there's going to be another quarter? Probably not. We'll be locking long on anything that redeems to try and lock in those high rates. Because the expectation is they are going to start coming down at some point with inflation starting to come under control. So that's what we are anticipating. So we'll continue locking long as much as we possibly can to maintain those interest rates.
Thank you. Any more questions? Council Woodlift?
Thanks, Chairman. I'm not an expert in this area. I often wonder whether it was ever a good idea to put so much money into property funds. Given the fact that in the past, property has always been a winner, it seems to me, but looking at the figures in front of us now. He said it's not a winner, is it? Because the value of, of the assets we bought, the portions we played, we bought, we bought into a, a fund, didn't we effectively as visiting? The value of the funds has fallen in relation to the total cost, which is not an acceptable situation, is it? So I wonder really whether, you know, and the judgment at the time might have been viable to invest in property funds. But perhaps looking back, it would have been better to have invested in a range of possible areas rather than property funds. I mean, what about treasury bonds and so on?
Is this a, a, a observation or is it a question?
Yeah, it's an observation, the question. I mean, I'm not an expert, so I'm asking, I'm asking, what, what, what do officers feel? Looking back, was it a good idea to go into property or would it have been better to have gone into a range of things and not just property?
That's the question.
Is that better?
Yeah, I'll ask Christine to answer that for you.
Well, hindsight is always a wonderful thing. And a, and a point I made also to Sean when we, we did the redemption, don't never look back. You know, you, you make, you make a decision on a day on the basis of the information you have in front of you. What you need to bear in mind is at the time you took those out, the interest rates were practically zero, talking of negative 0.1 of a percent. You have had a very good yield during a period when others were not hardly getting any yield whatsoever. Also, by going into funds that are professionally managed, spreading your risk across a portfolio, all in the UK. You've had presentations from those funds, you know, they're highly professional, the groups that run them. These are funds that are owned by pension funds in terms of making sure they get in yield and capital. But as in everything, these funds can fluctuate up and down. When the interest rates spike up, they drop down and similarly, when interest rates drop, they start to come up. So the expectation is at the moment is we're at the bottom of the market, hopefully now. It has definitely slowed down in terms of the degradation of the capital value. And I would expect to see that start to recover next year. So you're probably looking more 2025, in my view, when you'll start to see that recovery coming through, perhaps creeping into next year, middle of next year, then going forward. And we will keep a, similar to we have on the redemptions, we'll keep a very clear watching brief on those funds as we continue through.
Do you want to come back, Council?
Just briefly.
Very brief, very briefly.
It is, it would be. My point is that the economy has changed in a sense. And it appears that property is no longer the winner that it might have been in the past. A lot of businesses are shutting down, Boots and others are closing their stores. We've seen it in this town where stores have closed. And so perhaps the property market isn't what it was in the past. The change in the economy, it means that perhaps property is no longer the winner.
Noted. We're going to get a response for you.
These are modern property funds where they are, they're not those type of assets. We're talking about student accommodation. We're talking about large logistical sheds. Some of the, some of the things, the assets they hold are actually very high value assets. They've converted offices to make them more modern. Some of them have sold assets at good yields. So again, these are top quality stocks that you've held, very, again, very run. And the nice, the beauty of them having property funds and they're not all in one property fund is you're actually spreading your risk over a number of funds and therefore you, you're covering that risk. So if you, if you had instead decided to buy one asset and that asset had devalued, obviously you'd be in a very different, different situation. But instead what we have is, is a fund that is being managed in that way. And we just now need to see what the market brings us in terms of the future.
I think if you'd have known it was a modern property fund, you wouldn't have asked that question. So I think we've had, we've had the answer that we need on that one. So now I'm saying, if you, if we'd have known in the report that it was modern property funds, you wouldn't have asked that question. Because I think you're thinking it's probably all old properties or something. But anyway, we've got the answer. Thank you very much. We'll move on to councillor Mountain.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's really a comment or passing comment over what I've seen and what I've gone through over this. I think our fingers on the pulse or certainly your fingers are on the pulse. It's nice to, to see and it's quite refreshing to see that the borrowing is being managed quite well. Although, yes, we have got reservations over property funds. We don't have crystal balls. We're not property managers. We can only go off the facts and figures that what we've got. With the stepping loans and how we're managing the stepping and, you know, locking in those rates that we can, I think that's excellent. Ultimately, I think this is somewhere where we have got our finger on the pulse.
I agree. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Gilbert?
Yeah, I was just curious about, nothing particularly important, but credit default swap prices, are they a lead indicator of broader economic developments or conditions? I mean, I'm picking up councillor Woodlift's point that there must be things that indicate that an economy is heading in one direction or another direction. You haven't got a curly lip. Would, would, would credit default swaps be something along those lines? I don't know.
Sean, you're going to come in on that one?
Yep. Well, we use, when we make, make investment decisions, we use the Link Group counterparty matrix. And they've got all the financial institutions listed. It looks at the credit rating agencies assessments for standard and poor moody's. And can't remember the other one now, standard and poor's moody's and Fitch. But what, what they also do is they take into account what the cost of insuring against those banks defaulting on their loans, the credit default swap prices. And what they do is they compare that with the overall average for the credit default swap index. And if a financial institution is seeing selling of particular loans or has an area of concern or the country geopolitical area isn't looking good, they will make an assessment in relation to the cost of that insuring against that bank defaulting. And if they move a certain distance away from the average of that index, they will reduce the recommended investment period down a notch. And in some cases, they will probably say, don't invest with them any further. What we will do then is if that happens, I will go to section 151 officer and say, this particular financial institution no longer meets our investment criteria. We have got a loan with them that is due to mature on whatever. And then we make a decision as to whether we want to get that loan repaid. The dilemma there is if you want to have the loan repaid, it's likely to come at a cost. So in most cases, they will nearly always run to maturity. We would nearly always hold them to maturity so that we don't incur that capital loss as such on the original. But yes, it is you, credit default swap prices are used and they've been used ever since the Icelandic investment crisis happened. And that's how they developed from there. They looked at the Icelandic banking crisis, saw that if they'd used credit to swap, default swap prices, they may have been able to flag up some concerns to local authorities beforehand and stop them investing. So ever since that happened, we've been using that as part of things.
Thank you for your comprehensive answer.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you, Christine, for the, the reports. And I endorse what councillor Mountain said. I think we feel very comfortable and confident that we're in the, in the right hands here with our finances and etcetera. So thank you, you two, for, for keeping us under good governance. Thank you very much. And now I need a proposer, please, and a second for this report. So we've got a proposer. Councillor Mountain and councillor Danny for the second. Are you all in favor of this report? Can we, can we move it forward? Thank you very much. Go on to item six now. It's the Audit and Governance Annual Report. I'll ask John to talk us through that one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Best practice is that a audit and governance committee within a local authority reports to its full council on its previous year's activity. The report you have before you is a, is an annual report that sets out the work that this committee undertook in the year 2022, 23. And the recommendation of the report is that members review the report and let it be approved to be presented to the full council by the chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Council Woodlift?
Thanks, Chairman. Well, I have to disassociate myself from this report really because the introductions from yourself and it refers to year 22, 23, when of course you weren't part of the council as such. And I feel really the person who's written that should have been Peter Watson, should have been asked to write that introduction as an idea of the things that they did in that particular year. Now, what you've written down is valid for what happened after May 2023. It's fine, but the report itself is about the previous year, isn't it? And I have an issue with that because it should be written by the person who's in charge at the time rather than yourself. That's my position. That's my position actually, not just for this committee, but also for CNC and for E and P. The entry, the introduction should have been written by the people who were in charge at the time. And I have raised that matter with the chief executive and with the monitoring officer and with the leader of the council as well. So that's my position on it. I think what you've written is, you know, it's, it's fine for what it is, but it refers to us a period after May 2023, when the report really should be about, you know, May 2022 to 23. That's my concern about it. And that's why I think I can't support this.
Okay, well, that was the point that was raised to me. And I'm only taking guidance from the various people that says I write the report because the other people aren't in office anymore or they're not elected leaders or elected councillors anymore. And so there's an issue there. And so I took the initiative, I mean, being given the guidance and advice to do the report, to, to write it as best I could from the, from the time of May up to current time. You know, when you've got people no longer elected members, should they be writing a report that's moved on?
They were in office at the time.
Anyway.
Thank you, Chair.
I, I, I take your note and that's going to be noted down for what you've said. I'll take some questions as well. Councillor Mountain?
Thank you very much, Chair. Obviously, this is my first term in office. I just want to sort of highlight that for this question. Touching on what councillor Woodlift was saying, what is the general norm when we've gone through a transition of council? So quite rightly, people have left office, people can't write a report if they're no longer in office.
It's a difficult one. I wonder if anybody could give me an answer. I'll ask John to give us an answer.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, this report, when it's been presented previously, hasn't actually had an introduction forward from, from a member. And when we've looked again across the partnership of how this is done, we've, we've, we've noted that a member of the committee or associate with the committee has prepared that. So that's where it's come from. So in the past, this wouldn't have had such a forward or it might have had a statement of this report sets out the activity from the previous 12 months, something like that. Clearly, in this case, you've got, you have that situation, a four year term where, where there are elections. And on this occasion, fortunately, that, well, the chairman and vice chairman are no longer part of the committee. And so we've gone, we've asked the chairman of the current committee whether he'd be willing to provide a forward. And now obviously, if the chairman or vice chairman were still part of the authority, that may be a different matter because we would be able to work with them to put that forward. But obviously, they're no longer part of the authority. So we've asked the chairman of the committee on this occasion to provide it.
Do you want to come back on that?
No, thank you very much for that explanation. It seems fairly reasonable. Ultimately, if we address this like we're an operating business, somebody leaves the business, you're not going to ask them to come back halfway through when they're no longer work for us.
Thank you. Joe?
Sorry, it's perfectly normal in government departments or companies that a chief executive has only just arrived through the door would sign and write the forward for the annual accounts or, or, or anything. So I would not see that as a problem. It might be worth noting in the forward that, you know, thanks to the outgoing chairman or something that actually sort of signals that, that we haven't been there for the report. I did have one question, and that is, well, this is a report on our activity. Is there any precedence for the committee also reviewing its effectiveness, if only through some sort of 360? It is again, it's normal for other audit committees to, to do such a thing. And I just wondered if that had been considered or in fact whether it was on the schedule. And then I'd had one other question, which was, we review internal audit, we review finance, all of that and risk. And all of that seems a little bit difficult without the context of performance reporting as well. So I wonder whether we ought to have sight of performance report for the council as well, so that we can look at the whole in terms of risk, finance and performance. Thank you.
Do you think we'd like to give you an answer on that one? John?
Yeah, I'll pick up the two points. In terms of the self-assessment, that is scheduled for, for the committee to look at this financial year. So there will be a self-assessment process where the committee look at improvement because, you know, that again, that's best practice for all the governance committees to look at that. In terms of performance, that actually sits within the scrutiny arrangements within the council. So there are a dedicated scrutiny committee environment and performance committee that looks at the performance indicators. They're all public documents, but within the council that is separated. The performance and review of decisions and actions sits with, sits with the scrutiny committee. Whereas this committee is more, its role is more looking at the assurance and control environment across the authority.
Do you need to come back on that? Are you okay with that? Thank you. Councillor Danny?
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to come to councillor Mountain. I feel the same way. When I was elected the first time, you feel like you're in a swamp. You don't know what's going on. You get figures, you get, you know, a lot of things going through your, you know, through the papers, you know, and you can't do anything. You just try to find, you know, what's going on. You try to find your feet on them. That, that's happened all the time. And then there's that transaction, basically, when somebody gets out of the seat of a councillor and new one comes in. when somebody gets out of the seat of a councillor and new one comes in. So there is certain jobs as well and works, which is there previously done a year ago, two years, they just appear on the new council. It goes like that. The second thing, which is I will come to Joe, I mentioned these things before, and I asked the chairman, I think Peter Watson, how effective are we as an auditor and governance? Because in the end of the day, our decisions, they will go to the cabinet, the cabinet will, you know, go on that. They might take a different decision. So I always ask the question, how effective are we in AMP, CNC? And, and you know, the committees where we present, is there any power that we have? Can we change things? Can we make things, things better? And this is the question what I put. I hope that with the new leadership, these things will probably improve better. As you know, we, we preach for transparency and accountability. So that's all we can hope. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And noted. Any more questions? Matthew?
I think just in terms of your context question, I, I don't know whether the timing of this could be different in future years, because we do a annual governance statement, there's an annual audit opinion. So whether kind of those came to the same meeting, whether that would aid your context around it. It's just a thought.
I'm glad, because it's a bit strange me doing a report on something that happened, I wasn't here or partly wasn't here. So I agree. Anyway, any more questions before we move on? Right. Can I have a proposer, please, for that annual report? Councillor Danny? And councillor Austin, seconded. So any against? Councillor Woodlift?
Well, no, I'm not going to vote. I have to vote against, unfortunately. It's not a personal issue. You're a great chairman. I have to stand on this one. Well. Yes, I was, yes. I was on the committee and I could have written the report, councillor, couldn't I? But anyway, I'm not going to go into that.
I think, I think I take your point. We noted what you said and we recorded that down. Thank you very much. So we've got councillor Woodlift as
Against.
Against. And everybody else in favour?
Yes.
Thank you. Lovely. The item seven is the work programme. On page one eight one. Do you want to comment on that, John, at all?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. You'll see the items for tonight's committee meeting are listed on there. There's a number of them that are struck through the line where they've been moved to a future meeting. So the information, Governance Annual Report will come to your next meeting in January. The audited financial statements include an annual governance statement twenty twenty two, twenty three is due to come to that meeting in January as well. And I think the other, the external auditors progress report is also listed for January. I will just need to confirm with the external auditor that the completion report is scheduled for January, but I suspect it will be. And I'll confirm that about the committee.
Thank you. Any comments on the work programme before we move on? Yeah.
Thank you. Can we get anybody from the management of, I mean, as we agree, somebody to come probably and be here just to answer our questions?
We've got two officers at the moment. Do you want anybody else?
Well, we talked about certain departments.
Oh, that's, that's different. We've agreed that. We're going to invite people to come who need to be accountable for their actions or lack of them. We've already agreed that anyway, that's going to happen. But we've got two senior people here today anyways. We always do. Thank you. Right. So we're all happy with the work programme. Let me just say, thank you all for, for coming to the meeting this evening. I think we found it quite, quite interesting, quite informative, very in-depth discussion, may I say. Thank you much for that. I'll close the meeting. This is the final Audit and Governance meeting for this year. I'd like to thank the officers, that's Christine, Sean, John, Pippa. And I also like to thank Matthew, our internal auditor. And I'd like to thank Joe, our independent lay member and all the rest of the committee members. Thank you for, for your input and attention and hard work and dedication for the, for the